Let's go on the record. Good evening. My name is Mark DiSsoni, and I'm the Hearing Officer in the Legal Division of the Department of Public Utilities. I will note that tonight's hearing is being interpreted into Spanish and Portuguese. As you walked in, if you needed these services, you received headphones and instructions on how to access the desired language. We also have an ASL interpreter with us tonight. A stenographer is here as well and will transcribe everything that is said tonight. For anyone who will offer comment tonight, I would ask that you please speak clearly into the microphone at a moderate pace. This will help ensure that the stenographer transcribes and the interpreters interpret your comments accurately. Before I discuss Unitil's filings and we hear from the public, the department's chair, Jamie Van Oostren, would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening. I'm James Van Oostren. I'm chair of the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities. A little bit about the department. It's overseen by a three-member commission appointed by the Secretary of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs with approval by the governor. The secretary designates one of the commissioners as chair. All three members of the commission are here tonight. Cecile Fraser, to my far right, was appointed in 2017, and the Healy Driscoll administration announced in March that she would continue her tenure as commissioner while at the same time announcing my appointment as chair and Stacy Rubin as commissioner. Commissioner Rubin took office in early April. I took office on May 1, so we've been on the job a little over six months. Commissioner Fraser is the veteran among us with her six-plus years of experience. We're here tonight to hear your comments on the Pittsburgh Gas and Electric Light Company rate filing. The commission makes its decisions in writing, so we will not be making any rulings here tonight. We are here to listen to you, so please don't expect us to respond to your comments or questions, but know that we are taking careful notes and listening intently. Over the next few months, the department staff will be reviewing the company's written testimony and detailed cost data, cross-examining witnesses in evidentiary hearings. ... where you can learn about the rate case process, review the company's testimony, and see the impacts on your bills if the company's rate increase is granted. Just do a search for MassDPU in Pittsburgh or DPU 2381, which is the case docket assigned to this case, and it should take you to this page. I think you'll find the information to be very helpful as you participate in the case. A second priority is clean energy. In 2021, the legislature expanded our agency's enabling law to require us to not only prioritize safety and reliability, but also reducing the carbon emissions that lead to climate change and requiring utilities to implement measures that improve their resilience and ability to cope with the impacts of climate change. As we reduce greenhouse gas emissions, we will also reduce your exposure to the impact of expensive and volatile fossil fuels, such as the dramatic run-up in natural gas prices last winter, given this region's exposure to the global LNG market. Wind and solar both have zero fuel costs, so in the long term, this clean energy transition will be good for customers. In the short term, however, it may be expensive, which brings me to our third priority, affordability. Energy prices are very expensive in this region compared to other parts of the country, and utilities will be seeking to increase them further to recover the costs associated with offshore wind and all the investment in transmission and distribution infrastructure necessary to interconnect solar and storage projects and accommodate electric vehicle charging and electric heat pumps. We need to take action to address the challenges of the citizens of the Commonwealth in paying their utility bills. So in the next few weeks, we will be opening a proceeding to explore innovative solutions to the affordability issue. In Massachusetts, we have a single discount rate for each utility. In the case of Pittsburgh, for example, the company in this case has proposed to increase the electric discount from 34.5% to 40%. You either get the discount at that level or you don't. That doesn't match very well the greater needs at the lower end of the income scale. Some states have implemented billing based on a percentage of income or varying levels of discounts depending upon income, so we will be exploring some of those solutions in that new proceeding to come up with a better approach for Massachusetts. Our final priority is equity and environmental justice. We need to do a better job of providing opportunity for meaningful involvement of environmental justice populations in our proceedings, particularly when we are taking action to approve the siting of energy facilities as part of this clean energy build-out. Integrating environmental justice into our decision-making process is a high priority across all the EEA agencies, and each agency will have more resources to facilitate the participation of environmental justice populations in our proceedings to achieve more equitable outcomes. We will be adding additional personnel devoted to this initiative in the coming weeks. But back to the point of tonight's hearings. The actions of our agency affect nearly everyone in the Commonwealth. Our decision will be better when we hear from you and ensure that your comments influence our decisions. This public hearing is one way that you can participate and influence the agency. We thank you very much for taking the time tonight to share your thoughts with us, and we look forward to hearing your comments.
Thank you. This public hearing addresses two petitions filed by Pittsburgh Gas and Electric Light Company Doing Business as Unitil pursuant to General Laws Chapter 164, Section 94, and 220 CMR, Section 5, in following. In the first petition, the company seeks approval of a general increase in electric base distribution rates to generate approximately $6.8 million in additional base distribution revenues, part of which is generated through the transfer of costs from reconciling mechanisms and the rest through additional distribution revenues. Net of the transfers, the proposed overall increase to distribution revenues is approximately $4.1 million, which the company states represents a 13.6% increase in distribution revenue. The proposed base distribution rate increase is in addition to changes to other rates, such as supply rates and reconciling mechanisms that occur during the year. The company also has several rate-making proposals, including a five-year performance-based rate-making plan, which would allow the company to adjust its base distribution rates annual basis to account for, among other things, inflation and certain capital investments. A summary of the proposed rate increase and some of the rate-making proposals is set forth in the notice of tonight's hearing. We had copies of the notice available when you walked in. The notice also contains a link to the department's webpage where there is more information about the company's electric petition. The department docketed the electric petition as DPU 23-80. In the second petition, the company seeks approval of a general increase in gas distribution rates to generate approximately $10.9 million in additional base distribution revenues, again, part of which is recovered through the transfer of costs from reconciling mechanisms and the rest through additional distribution revenue. Net of the transfers, the proposed overall increase to revenues is approximately $6.7 million, which the company states represents a 23.5% increase in distribution revenue. Again, the proposed base distribution rate increase is in addition to changes to other rates, such as supply rates and reconciling mechanisms that occur during the year. The company also has several rate-making proposals on the gas side, including a five-year performance-based rate-making plan, which would allow the company to adjust its base distribution rates on an annual basis to account for, among other things, inflation. And again, a summary of the proposed rate increase and some of the rate-making proposals is set forth in the notice of tonight's hearing, which was available when you walked in. The notice also contains a link to the department webpage where there is more information about the company's gas petition. The department docketed the gas petition as DPU 2381. If Unitil's rate increases are approved as requested, the actual dollar changes to customers' bills will vary depending upon rate class and level of usage. The notices contained some bill impact information. Bill impact information is available on the webpages referenced in the notices, and any customer can contact the company directly for specific bill impact information. The department has suspended the effective date of any new gas or electric rates approved in these proceedings to July 1, 2024, in order to investigate the company's petitions. The department required the company to publish notice of tonight's hearing in state and local newspapers, to give notice to local elected officials, to provide copies of the notices to city and town clerks for posting in city and town halls, to display the notice on the company's website, and to provide individual notice to customers through a bill insert, email where applicable, and other forms of social media. There are two types of hearings that the department holds in a case like this. The first type is a public hearing in the department service area, which is the type we're holding tonight, where we hear comments from the public. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow anyone to provide their comments concerning the company's proposals to assist the department in its investigation. We have scheduled two additional public hearings for November 29 over Zoom. They are scheduled for 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. The notices that were provided tonight have more information on those hearings, including the Zoom link. The second type of hearing is an evidentiary hearing in which the company and any interveners present testimony and documentary evidence, both of which are subject to questioning. The evidentiary hearings will be held in February 2024. At this time, may I have the appearance of counsel for the company, please? Thank you. And do you have representatives here tonight, Ms. Winter? Mr. Hevort, do you wish to make a comment at this time?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Sorry about that. My name is Bob Hevort. I am president and chief administrative officer of Unitil Corporation. I'd like to thank you for taking the time to be here this evening and for sharing your thoughts and concerns with us. The decision to file a rate case is never easy, not for our customers, not for our regulators, and not for us. Because it's important that rates accurately reflect the costs of operating, maintaining, and investing in our distribution system from time to time, we must file base rate requests. Now, if these rates are approved as filed, the typical residential customer using approximately 600 kilowatt-hours a month would see a monthly increase of $10.34, or about 4%. A gas heating customer using approximately 70 therms a month would see a monthly increase of $31.86, or about 15.5%. Bill impacts for specific customers, of course, will vary depending upon their rate class and their usage. Aside from rate changes, our proposal includes certain new initiatives we believe will directly benefit customers. We propose to increase the discount available to qualifying low-income electric customers from 34.5% to 40%. We mean to provide meaningful additional monthly assistance to those customers who may need extra help in paying their bill. If our proposal is approved as filed, customers on low-income discount rates who use 600 kilowatt-hours a month will see a decrease of nearly 5% on their total monthly electric bill. We also propose a special rate for customers using heat pumps to meet their winter heating needs. Heat pumps are high-efficiency systems that use electricity to draw heat energy out of an environment and may be an important tool in meeting Massachusetts' decarbonization goals. This new rate is designed to provide customers using heat rates rate relief during the coldest months of the year. And perhaps most importantly, we propose moving from traditional cost-of-service rate making, which intends to cover reasonable costs of providing service, to performance-based rate making, which sets annual caps on rates over a given term, in this case, five years. Performance-based rate-making structures are designed to reduce the frequency of future rate cases and to produce lower, more stable rates relative to cost-of-service-based rates. Our proposal intends to eliminate the need for another base rate case for five years, until 2028. And lastly, while the purpose of this meeting is to hear your statements regarding our filing, you may have questions regarding your own bill or your own usage. If you do, we have two customer service representatives here by the entrance, and please, please feel free to visit with them. That's why they're here. They would take your information so that we can look into your situation, and then we can get back to you as quickly and as effectively as possible. But again, thank you for your time. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your consideration and your thoughts. We look forward to hearing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hevort. At this time, the department will receive comment on the company's proposals. The department traditionally allows elected officials the opportunity to speak first during the public comment portion of the hearing. The attorney general is represented here tonight. Does the attorney general wish to make a statement?
Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer. Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Burl. I'm an Assistant Attorney General with the Office of Attorney General Andrea Joy Campbell. Attorney General Campbell has asked me to be here tonight on behalf of ratepayers of the Pittsburgh Gas and Electric Light Company Doing Business as Unitil, the electric and gas divisions. By law, the attorney general represents the interests of Massachusetts ratepayers in gas and electric cases before the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities. As you just heard, on August 17, 2023, the Pittsburgh Gas and Electric Light Company filed two petitions seeking department approval of general increases to both the electric and gas distribution rates that the company charges for its distribution services. Currently, compared to neighbors in National Grid and EverSource territories, Unitil's customers pay significantly more for their electric and gas distribution service every month, and the company's proposed increases, if approved, will make conditions worse for its customers. For instance, if the department approves the company's requested rate increases without modification, the following changes will be experienced by the company's electric customers beginning July 1, 2024. By our office's calculations, a typical residential electric customer would see a monthly bill increase of $9.83, representing an annual increase in electric distribution rates of 4.1%. Compared to neighbors in National Grid and EverSource territories, a typical Unitil residential electric customer would pay 25% to 42% more for their electric distribution services. Commercial and industrial customers, depending on the tariffed rate on which they are receiving service and their monthly usage, would face annual distribution rate increases as high as 6.6%. For the gas division, if the department approves the company's requested rate increases without modification, the following changes will be experienced by the company's customers beginning July 1, 2024. By our calculations, a typical residential gas heating customer would see a monthly bill increase of $68.69, representing an annual increase in gas distribution rates of 13%. Compared to neighbors in National Grid and EverSource territories, a typical Unitil residential gas heating customer would pay 40% to 58% more for their gas distribution services. The company's commercial and industrial customers, depending on the tariffed rate on which they are receiving service and their monthly usage, would face annual distribution rate increases as high as 15.6%. In addition to these increases in distribution rates, the company is requesting department approval of a five-year performance-based rate-making plan for both its gas and electric divisions. If the company's five-year PBR plans as filed are also approved by the department, then in addition to the July 1, 2024 rate increases, customers' distribution rates will very likely increase at a rate exceeding inflation every year thereafter, 2024, until the company files its next rate case. The attorney general's office has been working hard to investigate the company's proposal, including working with experts to ensure that Unitil provides safe and reliable service at the least possible cost to ratepayers. This is an extremely important case because it will set the rates for 47,000 electricity and gas customers. The attorney general's office encourages all customers to take the opportunity to express their concerns and priorities here and throughout this case. Their participation is important, and it makes a difference. Thank you for this opportunity to present Attorney General Campbell's views.
Thank you. Representative Kuschemerik, would you like to provide a statement?
Good evening. Thank you. First, I want to thank Mr. Chairman for being here this evening, as well as each of the three commissioners, including the chairwoman of the commission. You may look around this room and be surprised by how few residents are here, and for those of you who were here for the last one, you'll remember there were hundreds of residents across north-central Massachusetts who joined us for the last rate increase, and hundreds, if not thousands, in prior years. And so your presence here today is truly appreciated, and I think the attendance today in some way reflects a feeling that this is predetermined for so many, and that in the past, their advices and their testimony and their hardships have fallen on deaf ears. And so truly and sincerely, I appreciate your presence here. I also appreciate the presence of the attorney general's office, who has been engaged with this legislative delegation, Senator Cronin, Representative Scarsdale, and myself for the past several weeks, and also the Department of Public Utilities, who was already engaged with this delegation. And I also want to thank my municipal partner here, Councilor Andrew Couger, representing Ward III, who I believe will be speaking later. That said, in many ways, the attorney general's office just stated what we all know. The highest rates in the state for both electric and gas are Unitil. For decades, they have preyed on the residents and the small businesses of Pittsburgh, Lunenburg, Ashby, and Townsend. The common sentiment in my neighborhood today, when I was speaking to neighbors and constituents alike, was that the only thing more predictable than power outages each winter is annual rate increases, or semi-annual rate increases. And these predatory rate increases have subjected many to poverty, forced businesses to close, often to relocate just a few miles down the road, decimating our tax base, forcing families who have been here their entire lives and homeowners for 30 years to seek refuge beyond the borders of these four communities that Unitil is home to. For many, I've heard that their single largest monthly expense and yearly expense is paying Unitil, often higher than the cost of housing itself. It's staggering to think about. And I realize as one of your new tasks is affordability, I think that's a sobering thought, is to think of heat and electricity as the single greatest cost to a family, not food, not housing. And I've heard so often from Unitil the justification of we have the smallest service area of any investor-owned utility in the Commonwealth. And while that may be true, and perhaps it is, and perhaps those costs are higher as a result, why should that be the problem of the residents who call Pittsburgh, Townsend, Lunenburg, and Ashby home? It shouldn't be. They don't get to choose where they grow up. Many don't get to choose, particularly in this region, home of a gateway city, don't get to choose where they live. But yet, Unitil has options. They choose to file these rate increases. They choose to file rate increases that would be in excess to all of their competitors in the investor-owned field. So while our ratepayers suffer, or our citizens suffer, whether they're seniors or children, whether they're small business owners or large industry that drive innovation and employment in our area, everyone's forced to suffer, while the investors and the executives So I heard that sentiment that it's only $40 a month. I grew up in a family where $40 a month extra was what broke or made the family. It was whether or not we ate canned vegetables that week, or whether or not we could eat well. And for so many residents that I represent, they grew up that way, or they're still living that way. And so, while $40 for so many may seem inconsequential, I urge you to think of those families who $40 will break them. $40 will mean that their children won't get to enjoy the holidays. It may mean that they have to give up their car. It may mean that they just turn off their heat this winter. And these aren't happening in ones and twos. This is happening on a wide scale. It's not just an urban environment, but it's also an incredibly rural environment. Both populations and both communities desperately depend on reliability and affordability. There's disproportionate number of people of color, of socio-economically disadvantaged people, of senior citizens, and of children. No parent should ever have to make those decisions about whether or not they can enjoy Thanksgiving, Christmas, or Hanukkah, or pay their electric bill. And so, while I know you'll hear a number of emotional pleas from our residents, and I know your task is often to look at a very objective list of criteria. I get it. That is your job. The regulations spell out how you must go through this process. I ask and I beg of you to hear through their pain of what they're experiencing and what so many in this district will experience. And for each one who speaks tonight, they're speaking for hundreds in their community. Senator Cronin and Representative Scarsdale and I, we met with you earlier, just several weeks ago, and I hope you hear me tonight that while there may be regulatory-speaking few options... few options for you, we stand here as a legislative delegation and as a community, ready and willing to do anything that will help to give you the resources that you need to ensure that everybody can properly afford to light their homes and to heat their homes year-round. And I want to thank Attorney General Campbell, who has been engaged in this process from day one, and the numerous career professionals who have been working throughout their entire career in the Attorney General's Office to hold Unitil to account and to ensure that ratepayers in Fitchburg can live, not just afford to heat their homes and light their homes. And I'm thankful to the Attorney General, who will be joining us in district in the next couple of weeks. And lastly, to constituents here, to those tuning in, I want to remind them that this delegation has filed several pieces of legislation, most importantly, the municipal choice legislation, to help further incentivize and give options to municipalities who wish to buy the utility infrastructure and create a municipal energy and light plant. We're going to continue to fight for them to give legislative options, to give regulatory options and regulatory teeth to the predatory rate increases that continue to plague our community, continue to hold our community back. We're a strong community, or a proud community. We might not always have all the resources, but we come together. And I hope you hear us loud and clear that we are united and unified in one voice, and we really hope that their voice does not fall on deaf ears, and that through you, we can see some relief for the first time in decades. Thank you.
Are there any other elected officials who wish to comment? Sir, could you just state your name for the record, please?
Thank you. Attorney Andrew Coocher, Ward III, City Councilor of the City of Fitchburg.
Could you spell your last name?
It's C-O-U-T as in Thomas, U-R-E.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present myself in front of you in behalf of my Ward residents, as well as the City of Fitchburg. Unitil is a burdensome yoke upon both the residents of the City of Fitchburg, as well as businesses. It has become so, and I would like to echo Representative Kuschemerik. Do not think that the lack of participation in this meeting means that the residents of the City of Fitchburg, as well as the surrounding area, do not feel the pain that Unitil brings to them. I hear it every day, every single day. We just got off an election, and everybody, no, first, they complain about the roads, that's first and foremost. The next complaint is Unitil. I have had multiple businesses, friends of mine, who were entrepreneurs, and they wanted to start their own business. They started their own business, and soon, the unbearable yoke of Unitil dropped upon them. And eventually, they had to give it up. And either they became unemployed, or they had to go back as employers for other businesses outside of this city. Unitil just doesn't care. Every year, or almost every year, they go for a rate increase. And although they might not get as much as they want, they always get something. And the residents of Fitchburg are tired of this. You know, how much is enough when a family has to think, well, do we eat, or do we freeze? That's not a choice that any parent should have to make. You know, I'll give you a story. I bought my house in 2011. It was a new development. Unitil did not bring the gas lines up to the end of the dead-end street where I bought my house. And I thought, well, being a resident of Fitchburg, I've had to deal with Unitil for many, many years, but now I'm my own homeowner. So I am going to get an alternative source of heat. So I got a gas fireplace. Well, Unitil's lines didn't reach up to my house, so I got propane tanks. And it helped. It helped a great deal. Then, Unitil decided to expand the lines, and I had a guy knock on my door from Unitil saying, hey, congratulations. You can now get gas provided by Unitil. I told him to get the hell off my property because I spend enough on Unitil, and I kept my propane tanks. And I spend a lot less on propane than I would paying Unitil. Now, I ask you, please, consider the businesses of Fitchburg, consider the residents of Fitchburg. We pay the highest amount across the country for gas and electric. Now, they can say, oh, we're just a small, you know, a small utility company, we can't help it. Well, you know what? Give us some choices. And I want to thank the representatives, Kuschemerik and the other representatives that are supporting the Muni bill. I grew up in a small town, Templeton, Massachusetts, and we had a municipal, we still, they still have a municipal light company. And their bills, the residents' bills and the businesses' bills, are a fraction of what they are in Fitchburg. So I ask you to please consider this. Should a family of four really have to decide, well, do we pay Unitil, or do we get our Christmas tree this year? Do the kids get presents? Do we have a turkey on the table? That's not a decision that a family should have to make, whether or not to freeze to death or to eat. I thank you for the time that you've been listening to me today, and I just ask you to consider, give us a break. Give us one time where Unitil does not get a rate hike.
Thank you. Are there any other elected officials? Could you just state your full name for the record, please?
Sam Squailia, S-Q-U-A-I-L-I-A. I'm City Councilor-at-Large and Mayor-elect for the City of Fitchburg. I am speaking on behalf of our thousands of residents and businesses that contact me about Unitil's electricity and natural gas bills, and the difficult decisions that those costs force our residents and businesses to make. Many of Unitil's customers here in Fitchburg are struggling to make ends meet. We have seniors living on fixed incomes, parents working two jobs just to afford to heat their apartment, and we have commercial and industrial businesses that can't afford to keep their doors open or their business in the City of Fitchburg due to excessive utility costs. Our gas and electric bills are already extreme and unaffordable today. 15% of Fitchburg residents live in poverty. That's 5% more than the state average, with a per capita income of $30,000 in Fitchburg, which is significantly $20,000 less than the state average income. Yet our residents are already burdened paying significantly higher utility bills than the state average. The current rate proposal will further increase this burden for our electricity and gas customers by $42 a month for the average residential bill, or $500 additional a year. The current rate is unaffordable. This increase, once again, is extreme and excessive. Our monopoly utility provider should not be making these levels of profits off our struggling seniors and our working-class community. I urge the Department of Public Utilities to compare the profits made from the Unitil Corporation from the residents and businesses of Fitchburg, Townsend, Ashby, and Lunenburg with our high poverty and low income, and disapprove yet another rate increase request. The current gas and electric rates are already a major detriment to the growth of Fitchburg and to the growth of raising our standard of living for our working class and our lower-income residents. Heat is a necessity, not a luxury, and we can't afford these endless increases.
Thank you. Are there any other elected or appointed officials who wish to speak? Okay, well, now hear from members of the public. As I mentioned earlier, a stenographer will transcribe your comments, and we have Spanish, Portuguese, and ASL interpreters here. So again, to ensure that the stenographer transcribes your comments accurately, and the interpreters interpret your comments accurately, please speak clearly into the microphone and at a moderate pace. And because this public hearing is a very important source of information for the department, we want to make sure that as many people as possible can speak tonight. So I'm asking that each of you keep your comments brief and to the point, and be mindful of the fact that there are other speakers who may wish to comment. And finally, please note that this is an opportunity for all of you to provide your comments and concerns about the company's petitions. It is not an opportunity to question the company. The company will have representatives available to answer individual questions following the hearing. It is also not meant to be an opportunity to question the department on how it will conduct its investigation. Because this is an ongoing investigation, the department is not permitted to discuss the substance of any issues presented in the company's petitions. We had a sign-up sheet at the front of the auditorium to sign up to speak, and I'll call those names in the order that they appear on the sheet. If you did not sign up, that's fine. When we finish with the names on the sheet, anyone else who wishes to speak may do so. The first name is Everett, E-V-E-R-E-T-T, Taylor. The next name is, looks like Roberta Flashman. Oh, I'm sorry, you Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize. Sir, could you just state your full name for the record?
Everett Taylor.
Thank you.
Blackrock, Vanguard, and State Street are the three largest shareholders of Unitil, Blackrock being the largest at 16.5%, with 2.6 million shares as of June 2023. Blackrock, a company that holds $9.4 trillion in assets. Would you say Blackrock has more a say in rate increases than the residents that you're proposing the increases for? Unitil recorded a net income of $1.4 million in quarter three. That's profit, so above expenses. Explain why, in a time of unprecedented unaffordability in our state and country, rate increases are necessary. The PBR plan over the next five years will adjust its base distribution rates yearly by the rate of inflation by up to a 5% cap. So as inflation continues to rise because of corporate greed, reminding everyone that Blackrock, State Street, and Vanguard have their hand in the pockets of most of the S&amp;P 500, those are the largest companies in this country, and are directly causing inflation, how are these rate increases anything more than a money grab, with the PBR plan being a mechanism to continually increase rates on us over the next five years? What effect is Unitil having on the gentrification of the city? We're already struggling to afford to live here.
Thank you, Roberta Flashman. And just, ma'am, could you just repeat your name for the record?
Certainly. Can you hear me? My name is Roberta Flashman. I hold a unique position, as I talk to you, in that I own a tiny, tiny company that produces energy, a whole 9.6 kilowatt-hour array for a community solar. I also am a homeowner, I live in Ashby, and have my own solar array for my own house. And I am the Chair of the Ashby Public Library Board of Trustees. And as a result, see what percentage of our budget, which is held to 2.5% increase as all government is because of Prop 2.5, and now are facing 6.6% increase in electric and 15.6% increase in gas with this rate increase proposal. Our current budget is mandated, we are a town less than 5,000, so the MBLC, Mass Board of Library, gives us a benefit that they understand that a small library, our major cost is personnel. We are open three and a half days a week. We have a director, and we have a page, and we have a library assistant. That brings our personnel budget to roughly 55% of our total budget. MBLC has said, in order to qualify for state aid, we have to spend at least 19.5% of our budget on books, and we do. We spend over 24% of our budget on electricity and gas. We face a charge on our bill because we are deemed to be a commercial enterprise, on par with factories that can turn on massive use of electricity at a moment's notice. We are billed at the same type of rate, a G2, which includes what's called a demand It's supposed to hold open. We are running lights. That is all we are running. Well, I take that back. We have a copier that is on sometimes. In the summer, we run air conditioning, which is over 20 years old now, and we found one of these air conditioners completely encased in ice this summer, so we turned it off. And yet, our bills continue to go up. I'm beginning to be at a loss as to what we can do to continue operating the library with this kind of expense. We have an elevator in the building. We built in addition to the building in 2003, approximately, and because we then had, anything that's new that's built that's more than one story has to have an elevator. This elevator has an inspection fee once a year of over $500, and then if there's anything wrong, the elevator company charges another $500 every time they have to come back. So this year, we've already spent approximately $4,000 on fixes to that elevator. It's easy for me to calculate percentage of budgets because our budget is roughly 110,000 total. So you do the math, it gets kind of easy, come approximately, you know, if you spend $50,000, it's approximately 50%, rough figures. As, I'm going to switch back and forth a little bit to heat pumps. I have a credit to heat pumps. I have a credit on my electric bill because I have solar panels. I also heat with wood. I'm not switching off the wood, not with what the electric rates are and propose to be. My son works in the solar industry. Massachusetts- Massachusetts, and especially the Unitil area, is one of the most lucrative places to put in solar because the payback is so good because the rates are so high. Massachusetts also has incentives for solar. Don't get me wrong. It's a give and a take. When I went to put in my 9.6 kilowatt array that I used for community solar, it took almost a full year to go through the process between when we put up the array and going live, between communication stalls, installation stalls, connectivity stalls. There is no reason why that should take so long. I'm not impacting the grid excessively with my huge solar farm. 9.6 KW is actually smaller than a good portion of the rooftop solar systems put on homes. But we brought it down from what we originally proposed of 25 KW because of the huge upfront payments we would have to make to Unitil because they felt we would impact their grid so much that we had to pay for upgrades. This is not the way to encourage clean energy, and one of your stated goals is to encourage clean energy. I'm a little worried that Unitil now has decided they're going to have a special rate for heat pumps in the coldest time of the year. Does that mean it's going to be special, especially high, just for those who went on to heat pumps thinking they'd save money? I worry. They say that they can't afford to bring rates down or they can't stop raising the rates because they're a small company. As I said, I live in Ashby. Ashburnham is next door to us. They have a municipal electric company. Their rates are approximately half of what ours are. A small farm moved from Ashby to Ashburnham. You may be aware that farms are somewhat energy intensive. Their rates dropped dramatically, dramatically. I think I've covered most of what I wanted to cover. But that demand charge is the piece that just drives me crazy. 34% of our service charge was that demand charge. And it's ranged anywhere from 34% to a very low of 24% of our service charge being this demand charge, reserving our place on the grid through their pipelines for our massive amount of electricity that we use. There's got to be, and by the way, I called around and other libraries received the same demand. Well, I don't know. I take that back. I called within Unitil, and I called our regional school, Middlesex, North Middlesex, and they get a demand charge too. And they weren't as, they didn't pay as much attention to their electric bill as I had, and they weren't aware they had a demand charge, and they began to scratch their heads. It's been suggested there may be ways to adjust it, to make it reflect more what's going on, but we've tried any number of things, and it basically comes up with the highest daily use, and you get charged that. Our charge prior to January was $9.64 per kilowatt hour in the demand charge. So if you have a demand of 11 kilowatt hours, in other words, you're averaging 11 kilowatt hours of usage a day, we got an extra $106.04 added to our bill. Most recently, they calculated our demand charge to be 20 kilowatt hours with a new charge of $9.99 per kilowatt hour despite what publicity said was. It's going to go up to 10. So what we got charged in our latest bill added $198.20 to our electric bill without any real reason why. It's just this, demand charge. I would suggest to Unitil and maybe to the DPU that you have a different rate for government buildings rather than classing us with factories who are switching on huge demands for electricity. Our demand is more than a residence, yes, but it's not a factory. Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming. If there is a small attendance in this hall, I will tell you, when I tried to get into the hall, all the doors were locked, and I couldn't get into the building until a person next to me pushed the button for the wheelchair entrance, and that one opened.
The next name on the list is Judy, and I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. It looks like Migliozzi. Ma'am, could you state your full name and spell your last name?
Judith Migliozzi, M.I.G.L.I.O.Z.Z.I.
Thank you.
The reason I'm here this evening is not so much about the rate differentiation. We had an incident of an accident happen in our neighborhood, maybe six or so months ago, in the colder weather, and a gentleman came up, pause, I should say, Ross, and intersected with blossom, went smashing through one of the neighbor's brick walls. That created a transformer breakage. All the power went off, and then it went off, and then it. We had no power for a couple days, or for a couple days, for a couple days. And the aggravating part of this whole situation, try to get reimbursed for all the damages that created on our street. Furnaces were damaged, had to be replaced, computers had to be replaced, our induction cooktop, which was relatively new, was shot. So all these things, probably 10 different homes, had serious damage done to their properties. Trying to get ahold of Unitil, nobody, no response, nothing. Okay? And I want to know, I want you to tell me, does Unitil have some type of an insurance coverage when damages like this occur for the residents? Or is that nothing?
As I stated before, ma'am, we're not going to be answering any questions, but Unitil has representatives here after the hearing, and you can certainly ask them that question.
Okay. But don't you think that's a bit unacceptable?
I would suggest that you express your concerns to Unitil.
Who's here from Unitil that I can talk to? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next name on the list is Zachary, and I apologize, is it B.O.S. or B.O.G.?
Yes.
Zachary Boss, B.O.S.
Zachary Boss, B.O.S. Last time I spoke at a DPU hearing, I found myself using words like usury. I really thought that if you speak to the moral outrage of a company whose greed reduces the sustainability, the livability, and the opportunity in the city, it would make an impact. That was my naivete. I'm naive, and I'm also not an expert in energy regulation or the economics of energy distribution. I was looking at some numbers, and so please bear in mind that I'm an amateur. But from an amateur perspective, and I dare say, most of our 41,000 residents in Fitchburg are amateurs in this area, the numbers add up in a way that is outraging. The proposed rate changes are intended to generate an additional $17.5 million a year. I know that the DPU is charged with determining whether these rate changes are in the public interest and whether they're prudent. I'm not sure that you send your executives, your linemen, your bill collectors to impoverished households to generate 17.5 million. I think that you send it to where the money is. If public records inform me correctly, Mr. Hebert, and a half dozen of the other most highly compensated executives at Unitil collectively make about $7.5 million a year. If this company was innovating truly, if it was subject to market forces and forced to adapt to market conditions such as inflation, such as poverty, they would really think outside of the box, such as, maybe we lower our costs, maybe we lower our personnel costs, maybe we reduce that salary pool of 17.5 million by 50%. They're still bringing home millions, they're still bringing home hundreds of thousands. They'll probably be fine. But if we were to recoup $3.75 million a year and they could cut their needed demand, that's 20%, a 20% reduction in the needed revenue for them to meet their business needs. Now, the proposed rate changes are broken out by gas and electric by month. This is intended to minimize the size of the figures on that page. It amounts to $500 a year per household. That's a make or break number for many of these households. If you reduce that by 20%, you get $100 back in a household. Our city is yoked, burdened by two major problems. One is our roads infrastructure, and one is Unitil, a parasite. One of the ways that our municipal leaders proposed that we remedy the roads problem was to assess an annual road use fee on our vehicles. It was on the order of $200 a year. The city balked. The citizens knew we could not pay that price, could not pay $200 a year. I'm just comparing numbers. If we all had $100 a year back, that would go halfway toward meeting our roads needs. It's a zero sum game. If you pay for one thing, you can't pay for another. I'm not sure that Unitil's arguments, that it is prudent and in the public interest, that we pay them at the expense of our businesses and our families, our municipal life, our community centers, our commerce, our culture, that doesn't get the money. They want the money. As an amateur and as a resident, those numbers do not add up to me, and I think that the word I used several years ago, usury, still applies.
There are no other names on the sign up sheet, so at this time, does anyone else wish to make a comment? Before you begin, I'm going to ask you to state your full name and spell your last name.
Should I bring this down or can you hear me?
Yes.
Is that better?
Yep.
My name is Carmen Gil, G.I.L. If you notice on your sheet, there's a name scratched off, pretty scratched off. That was me. Because I put my name on the list to speak, and then I realized I was so angry, outraged, frustrated, that I was afraid that I was going to say things that didn't make sense or that were not polite. I think, and maybe I'm wrong, I think we're tired of being polite. We're tired of being robbed. I have to think, can I pay my full mortgage this month? Or do I have to give it all away to Unitil because they have decided that they're more important than me putting food in my children's bellies? Fitchburg is a beautiful place. I've lived here the majority of my life. Most of the residents here, or a good portion, are low income. Do you know what that means? Do you really fully understand what having to live paycheck to paycheck? I work full time. My husband works full time. I do not understand why we have to go get yet another job just so that we can make ends meet, so that we can pay our Unitil bill. I have solar panels on my home, and I still pay a ridiculous amount monthly. I have elderly parents who own a home, who have to decide every single month, do I pay the electricity bill or do I get my medication? That doesn't make sense. Unitil is putting this city in such a position where people are having to choose to leave their homes. Some of us have lived here our entire lives, have moved away and come back. Because regardless of all of the negative things that happen here. Turn me back on, thank you. This is a community, and we do care about each other. Yes, the roads are awful. But Unitil, taking the few pennies that we have left because you chose to? Didn't we just have an increase last year of how much? Does anyone know the percentage that our bills went up last year?
Too much.
No, no.
Depends on the rating.
Depends on the rating. 40%! How can, if I could not afford to pay my electric bill two years ago, what makes you think that I can pay 40% more this year? Oh, and by the way, next year, pay us a little more because we're not rich enough. Come on! You're killing our community. We don't have a choice. We don't have a choice. It's either Unitil or let's get out of here. Have you seen our downtown? We can't get anyone to stay because Unitil is sucking the life out of this community. And I just, you're sitting there, but I don't think you're really there, and I don't think you truly understand. The gentleman over here, who in one year will make more money than I will ever make in my entire life, you have to understand. Us giving you 10 more dollars a month? Come on, it's nothing, it's pennies to you. But it is a difference for some of us. Can I get my child's asthma medication? Can I get my parents' diabetes medication? Or do I have to put the heat down so low that I'm also using blankets? My fireplace is running? You know, it's, you don't know. So put yourselves in our positions. I am so sick and tired of hearing, "Unitil, Unitil." It has become a curse word in my family. You're stealing from elderly people who cannot afford it. You're stealing from elderly people who cannot afford it. You know, it's... No, I don't want to give you any more money. Give me money. Because the more money we give, I don't see any changes. Does anyone, is anyone getting besides Unitil? What benefits am I getting? Nothing, nothing. So no, I don't want to give you any more money. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Gil. Does anyone else wish to make a statement? Sir, could you state your full name for the record, please?
Yes, Arthur Gagden.
Spell your last name.
G A G N O N.
Thank you.
I've never done this before. I never came up talking in front of anybody, but I really don't care if I mess it up. But I'm talking to my mother this morning above this and she told me not to come here because she's 85 years old and she says that they don't listen. They don't listen. Don't waste my time coming here. I also talked to my aunt that's 75 years old and she has to worry about how to pay her electricity. Nobody cares. Bottom line is, is all day long I've been being talked out of coming here because they don't listen. I'm hoping you guys do know where you were tomorrow morning when you wake up because it doesn't sound like you're listening. It stinks going to my mom's house and explaining to her how to pay her bills. I'm disabled. I also have to do that. But I got buck left in me. I can go without heat. I can go without electricity. But I don't believe that my mother, my neighbor, or the veteran down the street has to go through this. I don't know how you guys sleep. I don't even know if this is going to go anywhere with you guys. With the little guys here trying to do a lot and you guys have just put this down. It's funny because I'm 63 years old and I remember at 17 years old going down to Fitchburg Gas and Light and argue about them, about their bill because I'm only 16 and I just started working. I can't afford it. Boy, oh boy, this is getting old. I'm 63, we're still doing this. I'm not worried about me. I'm worried about all the old people out there that can't heat their house and they're concerned. And I'm one of them ones that love Fitchburg, can't move, but won't either. I think that if we stop wasting our time asking them to cut, cut their... You know, bills down now, bills down now. Why don't we make sure they're doing their job? I never see gas and light company around me. And my parents have to get up every morning and wonder if they're going to eat supper. So this morning when I left, I told my mom, I'm not done. This meeting won't be done. I'm going to continue looking up what we can do. There's a lot of people. I'll go to every town, every town, and get millions of signatures. There's got to be somebody else here that wants to take over this. I don't even know if it's instructive. Whatever it is, polls are leaning this way, that way, you know? Maybe they can buy it for a dollar or something. But why have my parents taken, and me, 63 years old, I remember doing this? You guys don't even let us in your building. We can't talk to you. We can't come down here and explain to our problems to you guys. Because you lock all... Because you lock all, all, all... Because you put up a nice, put up a nice, up a nice... Facility, not, not... Town. You lock, you lock your doors, you lock your doors, you lock your doors. Have a heart. You know, someday might be... Have to do that. Fortunately, you guys are making my parents do it. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Sir, could you state your full name for the record, please?
Absolutely. My name is Stanley Howe, Resident Stanley Howe, H O W E.
Thank you.
So I didn't come here planning to speak. I'm grateful for the One Ward Councilor and Mayor-elect Councilor Lodge being here. Again, my background is I've been a city resident for almost my entire life. I purchased a new home in 1988, raised our children, okay? And for the longest time, Unitil has been the butt of many jokes. They have been the highest cost provider in the area. If you talked to a Lemmister resident, it was like, yeah, Unitil, highest cost. I spent over 30 years in the high-tech industry, computers, storage, up and down 495. But recently, I've begun selling real estate with my wife. We have clients that say we don't want Fitchburg. Do not put me in Fitchburg. I do not want to pay the utility rates. All right? It's understandable. Maybe a little obsessive, obsessive, but... True, 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 true. Where are we going to be in 2030, 2035? They see the trends. With those trends, as a corporation, is growth. They see the opportunity. The only provider in the area, it's like owning a shop and the customers have to come to you and then... More, and they bring more, and they bring more, and they bring, and they bring, they bring more. They get more, 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 more from you, from you, from you. So right, so right now, we're complaining about lights, cooking, drying, and we're going to say, oh, I'm upset about the increases. We don't have a choice. Right now, I can go to my local gas company to fill up my car. I can go from here to Worcester. I find my best price and I go. Oil company, I can go to a number of places. When we start switching over our entire life to electric and we only have one provider and Unitil still has the same rate structure that's higher than others, we're going to be in a lot of trouble. And as a Realtor, you're going to find that the communities that Unitil serves are going to be less desirable. And people aren't going to realize it. It's going to be like that slow-boiling pot of water and until it reaches the boiling point, they're going to go, oh, my God, I didn't know this. Nobody wants to buy my house. They want to live in Lemmister because they can see the justification of not paying those excessive electric costs for all these additional things that we now have in our lives. So again, let's not talk about 2023. You've got to see the picture. The picture's been going on for years and Unitil just has to find a way to bring their rate structure in line to Massachusetts. Now, Massachusetts is excessively high. I have a daughter that lives in Fort Lauderdale. I saw her bill, 12 cents a kilowatt hour total. I'm paying about 35 cents because I was smart enough to go find a supplier that gave me a reduced rate. But it's probably 35 to 40 cents for most people. No wonder heat pumps are popular in Florida, South Carolina. The utility costs are so much less. So now the government, Unitil, MassSave, saying, hey, you got to go to heat pumps. I'm going to give you $10,000, all right, to do that. Remember, I bought a new house in 1988, two-story colonial. My situation is four-stop water, oil burner, but they also put ductwork for air conditioning. All right? So MassSave, a couple of years ago, said, hey, we'll update your burner, your boiler. They did it for $5,000. Okay, heats my whole house. That boiler will probably be good for 30, maybe 40 years. All right? Well, I started getting quotes from my A C and saying, hey, I want the heat pump. I'm going to get... $10,000 rebate, rebate, rebate. Running in my, running in my house, in house, in New England, in New England, paying 35 cents a kilowatt hour. I've done the math. It doesn't save you a cent. But I've got to dish out $35,000 minus the $10,000. Heat pumps don't last as long as oil burners either or boilers. Bottom line is, we've got to bring Unitil in line with other utility companies so that we're on... Yeah, level ground. I don't have to, I don't have to, have to... Of choice, of... Lemmister, Lemmister, Lemmister because I want a lower rate, because I want a lower rate, lower rate, lower rate. Or Ashburnham, Groton, Templeton, all reiterate about those plans that Unitil has. Again, they're going out five, 10, 20 years. They see the number. They're laughing all the way to the bank because they see the customers have to come to them. So again, I'm repeating myself. Let's bring those rates in line with other utility companies. Thank you.
Sir, could you state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, Jake Justman, J U S T M A N.
Thank you.
Unitil has 16 million outstanding shares. On November 28th, they will pay a dividend of 40 cents. That comes out to $6.48 million. This quarter, they're paying to their shareholders. Annually, that's $25 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to comment? Ma'am, could you state your full name, please?
Sure, Kathy Clark, C L A R K. Back in 2008, after the ice storm, I created a petition. Didn't expect it to take off like it did. We garnered about 6,000 signatures online and in person. I had the support of numerous city councilors, mayor, select board. It was copied at the time, was given to the D P U, to the Attorney General's office. I was naive. The name of the petition was called Get Rid of Unitil. Today, what exists is a Facebook group of about 1,000 people that still speak out, speak about their bill. We've done numerous things over the years, from standouts to coming into cell station in the early years and advocating that you come out here. And we certainly appreciate you coming out. But it's become repetitious. It's like Groundhog Day. I do have to say, Mr. Hevert, I applaud you for coming out here. But I would applaud you even more if you gave up some of your salary or some of the top exec salaries, truly, truly, to help some of the poor people in this district. One thing I would like to point out, and a lot of people may not be aware, and I spoke with the previous mayor of Fitchburg about this, the bad debt that accumulates, they're allowed to roll on the backs of ratepayers. That's shameful. You wonder why the absorption rate is so high? People aren't paying their bills. Their bills are outrageous. They're unexplainable. It's eat or be homeless for some. You've got to do something about this. As the previous speaker said, as a Realtor, of which I am as well, as well as a small business owner, people don't want areas where Unitil exists. We've got to do something about this. I would like to quote to you, if I can, a couple of rates. If you go to massmunichoice.org, you will see the average monthly residential bill. Eversource, 212, 132% above munis. National Grid, 216, 135%. Unitil, 215, 135%. Eversource, 193, 111%. During January to June, Unitil charged two, almost two and a half times what the average muni charges. You've got to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Does anyone else wish to comment at this time? Name for the record, please, please?
Kian Kinnirey, Kinnirey. It's K, Kinnirey, it's Kinnirey. It's K, it's K I, N I R E Y. I really didn't think I would do this. Won't be at Fitchburg. People are moving out of Fitchburg and there won't be a Fitchburg. I myself have two jobs and I have to make a decision. Do I want to put my gas fireplace on or do I want to pay the bill? I haven't put the gas on in two winters because I just can't afford it. It's just, it's just too much. I myself am not young, but as soon as I retire, I want to leave just because of the bills. I got two years and I can retire. And I strongly look moving out of Fitchburg just so I can afford to live on my retirement income. It's just a thought. Thank you.
Sir, could you state your name for the record?
Sure, Mike Clark, Lunenburg. I'm also the Chair of our Lunenburg Republican Town Committee, and Town Committee, and Committee. You know, we hear a lot of things and catchphrases these days and living in Fitchburg for 200 years or even more. You know, I tell my son while we go through Fitchburg, the only reason Fitchburg exists is because there was a river running through it and an elevation change. And that attracted primary mills and then bigger mills and then a city. And so it's only in the last ten or so years we hear these environmental justice. Peoples have lived here for hundreds of years and these issues weren't problems. So we seem to be doing things because of agendas. And that's fine, but it's raising the cost of things. And when you talk about utilities, this is very old technology. You know, we have some Facebook pages. Somebody, somebody put a picture of a lead water canister from Pompey Plumbing. And some woman posted, well, lead is Latin for, plum is Latin for lead. That's where the name plumber comes from. So, you know, gas lines and all, that's a derivative. This is old technology. Electric lines are old technology. We see Fitchburg Historical Page, Lunenburg. These transmission lines have been up for 100 years. We're not inventing things here. The cost of this infrastructure should be coming down, not going up. The cost of generating electricity should be coming down, not going up. Our executives here are paid to come up with cost-reducing measures. They're MBOs. That's why they get their bonuses. They put in software to better billing structures. So the rates should not be going up. As, they're doing cost reduction within their company. The technology does not demand this. And I don't want to slight the engineers and all as distribution systems may get a little... But we should be seeing rate reductions. You know, Henry Ford built cars and fine-tuned it so that everybody could afford a car. We're getting now into, you know, electric vehicles and all, 40, 60, $80,000. So what is going wrong with these political agendas that are driving the costs of everything up? costs of everything up instead of down? We, we don't need a lot. We just need a transmission line to bring voltage to our house. So it really should be, we, we should be pushing for a cost reduction or a rate reduction, not a rate hike. So I, it, it's really something, something's broken. And, and, you know, people, people got to start to push on officials. You know, let's, let's start to reverse the clock so that we, we can, you know, produce affordable electricity, look at rate reductions, not elaborate schemes and, and all of these agenda-based items. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Does anyone else wish to comment at this time? Sir, could you state your name for the record?
My name is Bruce Cote, C O T E.
Thank you.
I have been a resident in Fitchburg all my life. In 1961, I decided to get married and raise my children here in Fitchburg, which I did. I've been married to the same woman for 62 years. Funniest thing is, once we got married, we had to, at that time, taking care of things that normally, you know, a single person doesn't, we had to pay our bills. Unatil then became a very big focus to me because I had to pay those bills. Excuse me, I have a little horsey throat. Anyways, in 1962, I believe it was, or even 63, I went to the first of these meetings. Six decades later, I'm facing the same, not you people necessarily, but the same thing, the Department of Public Utilities. I'm upset with Unatil and its rate increases. There's no doubt about it and there's good reason to be that way. But I'm also upset with the Department of Public Utilities. That word public sticks here in my throat because I, in, in six decades, I have yet to see you people work for us. Every time these people go for a rate increase, let's take a stupid number out of the air, 10% they want. So what do we do? We argue and argue and argue. You people sit down, you look it over, then you come back to us and say, guess what, guys? We're not going to allow that. We're going to let them have 7%. But the real amount they wanted was 5%. So guess what? They walk off with more they wanted than what they asked for. This has been going on for six decades, people. I've written letters, I've, I've notified your department and have never got any satisfaction. In 1973, my company moved out of Fitchburg, took 300 jobs based on one thing. I moved up in the ladder with that company. When I left it, I was the director of public, excuse me, personnel. So I understand the electricity business at that end of that. And what they left for, they took 300 jobs out of Fitchburg was because of Unatil. Now, Fitchburg cannot get any big industry to come into Fitchburg, yet Lemmister, next door to us, they get all kinds of business. They're thriving. Businesses are looking to move into their places. They won't move into Fitchburg. Why? Because your rates are so far high that it's ridiculous to even want to be here. We've got the land. We've certainly got a government that wants them to come in here. We've got mayors and councilors that work for us, but yet because of Unatil, we can't thrive. So what are we going to become? A bedroom community? That's what basically we have become. So all I want to say tonight is one thing. I blame the Department of Public Utilities as much as I do them. If you're not going to help us, then what the hell do we have you for? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cote. Does anyone else wish to comment at this time? Sir, could you state your name for the record, please?
Paul Migliozzi, M I G L I O Z Z I. Fitchburg resident for over 50 years. As I rounded, as I rounded the corner this evening approaching the parking lot, I was at the parents out there were for the parents at the basketball games just across the hall. I did not have a stack of white papers to preview for this evening's hearing. I really didn't know what the purpose of this evening's meeting or hearing was. My office staff, I had to lay off most of them because of high utility rates. I'm sure you understand. So I don't have a rebuttal and what I have to say is strictly off the cuff. I am not naive to believe that this hearing was called because of your sincere concern for your constituents or your customers, which I believe is over 120,000 or so. I do believe, however, that you didn't come here to stockpile any accolades or commendations from your customers as well. So I just have a couple of brief questions. Number one, what did you do or have you done to achieve such a dishonorable position as being number three or four? I'm talking about statewide, state of Massachusetts, three or fourth highest residential electric rates in the country, followed by natural gas prices as well. And the second question I would have is, what were the net profits posted for this year? And I'm sure you have those readily available in front of you. We'd like to know how much money actually came, a, a net profit that Unatil gained this year. It would be interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to comment? Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight and to those who provided comments. Once again, we'll have two more hearings over Zoom on November 29th. One at 2:00 PM, one at 7:00 PM. The company has representatives available to talk with you tonight about individual concerns. Public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you. Let's go off the record.